Welcome to the Lakewood City Council January 20th, 2015 council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Anderson.
President.
Pollock.
Here.
Juris.
Here.
Madigan.
Here.
Marks.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
O'Leary.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council until December 15th, 2014.
Move to adopt without the necessity of a reading. On that. I take back that motion. I withdraw that motion. Withdrawn second. Move to defer.
Second.
On that motion is there discussion? All those in favor of deferring those minutes?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council until January 5th, 2015.
Thank you. Move to defer.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item one, Committee of the Whole report regarding Committee of the Whole, 1-515, appointments 3614, 878714.
Madigan. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Marks. Dear colleagues, the Committee of the Whole met Monday, January 12th, 2015 to discuss
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
three items. That motion passes. Move to adopt. Citizens' appointments to boards and commissions, proposed ordinance 3614, repeal 1143 off-street
Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk? Anderson.
Yes.
Pollock. parking zoning, and proposed resolution, which was a five-year consolidated plan.
Yes.
Juris.
Yes.
Madigan.
Yes.
Ordinants 3416 and resolution 878714 were deferred and taken up at the Committee of Marks.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
O'Leary. the Whole this evening, for which I'll do a separate oral report.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Item four, resolution 877414, a resolution appointing Colleen Zettler to the Community
We discussed appointments to various boards and commissions and recommended the following
Reinvestment Area Housing Council.
appointments. Move to substitute.
Second.
Discussion? James Amendola to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Colleen Zettler to Community Reinvestment Madam Clerk?
Anderson.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Area Housing Council, Ryan Skubek to Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council, Amanda Barretto Juris.
Yes.
Madigan.
Yes.
Marks.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
O'Leary. to the Board of Nuance Abatement, Rick Seeca to the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board,
Yes.
That motion passes.
Item five, resolution 877514, a resolution appointing Ryan Skubek to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council.
and Amy Haney to the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board. Move to substitute.
Second.
Discussion? Respectfully submitted. Madam Clerk?
Anderson.
Move to receive and file that communication.
Yes.
Pollock.
Second.
Yes.
On that motion, is there any discussion? Juris.
Yes.
Madigan. Those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Marks. Those opposed?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Allen.
Item two, resolution 877114.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
That motion passes. Move to defer. Move to adopt.
Second. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? All in favor? Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Anderson.
And that motion passes.
Yes.
Pollock.
Item three, resolution 877314, a resolution appointing James R. Amendola to the Board
Yes.
Juris.
Yes.
Madigan.
Yes.
Marks.
Yes.
of Zoning Appeals.
Allen. Move to substitute.
Yes.
Second.
O'Leary. Any discussion?
Yes.
That motion passes. Madam Clerk?
Item six, resolution 877614, a resolution appointing Amanda Barretto to the Board of
Anderson.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Juris.
Nuance Abatement Appeals.
Move to substitute.
Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Anderson.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Juris.
Yes.
Madigan.
Yes.
Marks.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Item four, resolution 877414, a resolution appointing Colleen Zettler to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council.
Move to substitute.
Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Anderson.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Juris.
Yes.
Madigan.
Yes.
Marks.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Item five, resolution 877514, a resolution appointing Ryan Skubek to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council.
Move to substitute.
Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Anderson.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Juris.
Yes.
Madigan.
Yes.
Marks.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Item six, resolution 877614, a resolution appointing Amanda Barretto to the Board of Nuance Abatement Appeals.
Move to substitute.
Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Anderson.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Juris.
Yes.
Madigan.
Yes.
Marks.
Yes.
It's the thrill of a lifetime, so he sends his regrets that he's not here at this first part of this process. I do want to remind people, this is the first part of the process. What happened last week was that the Lakewood Hospital Association sent us a letter of intent. The mayor put that under cover of a letter in which he explained it, and I think most of you have had a chance to read it. It's also available online, and if you'd like a copy, we'll make a copy available to you. So that's where we are. We're in the beginning of a process. We will have full and open hearings. We will have committees of the whole with council. We will have, we have at least two public meetings scheduled, and we will do this in Lakewood style. We will ask and answer everything we feel we need to do. Thank you. So far, tonight, we have Mr. Monahan. So, thank you, and we're going to... I, yes, the clerk will just read the, sort of, the ground rules for the public comment.
Section 12108 of the codified ordinances of the city of Lakewood establishes rules for the public to follow when speaking before council. President may recognize any nonmember for addressing council on any question then pending. In such cases, the person recognized shall address the chair, state his or her name and address and the subject matter he or she desires to discuss. Speakers must be courteous in their language and avoid personalities. When addressed by the chair, the speaker must yield the floor and comply with all rulings of the chair. Said rulings are being opened to debate except with permission of council specifically given. Speakers shall be limited to five minutes. No person who has had the floor shall again be recognized until all others desiring an opportunity to speak have been given an opportunity to do so.
Thank you. So, with that said, your name and address.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Tom Monahan, and I live in 1487 Waterbury Road, which coincidentally happens to be the home that Dr. Graver built and mortgaged to build Lakewood Hospital. My wife and I sat over the weekend and put these thoughts together. I'd like to share them with you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We have lived in Lakewood for the last thirty-seven years and purchased our home here because of Lakewood's reputation for being a great place to raise a family. Lakewood is always known for providing quality services. One of the major services was health care, namely Lakewood Hospital. Over the years, we have utilized Lakewood emergency and inpatient services numerous times. About nine years ago, we thought about moving to a one-first-floor home, but decided to stay in Lakewood and upgrade our home at a cost of nearly $150,000. Our decision was based in part on the security and confidence we felt living so close to a quality, full-service hospital. When Cleveland Clinic partnered with Lakewood Hospital, we were concerned but trusted the hospital to honor their agreement to maintain quality services and upgrade the hospital to meet the growing needs of both families and elderly in Lakewood and the surrounding neighborhoods. Honor about 2007, the clinic started transferring services from Lakewood Hospital to Fairview Hospital. One by one, we lost services: pediatrics, general psychiatry, cardiac procedures, obstetrics, et cetera. Emergency services were limited. At the time, we were very concerned, but the clinic continued to ask us to trust them as they continued to assure us that they had a plan to make the hospital strong and that would continue to provide needed service at a quality level. Now, the clinic is saying that the hospital is losing money, so it has to close and move to where the money is in Avon. We still owe, we still have over 50,000 people in Lakewood, including three extended care facilities, four senior housing complexes, and a growing number of young families. Obviously, the trust we were asked to give the clinic has not been honored by them. We were being asked to surrender a major service, a community icon, an income source, as well as a source of pride and comfort. The clinic has built up Fairview Hospital, adding building after building while continually downsizing Lakewood Hospital. Obviously, it was their plan all along to work toward the closure of this time-honored facility. The citizens of Lakewood have supported this hospital all the years, and we added on and upgraded in emergency services about fifteen years ago with an excellent emergency department. This addition, funded by the people of Lakewood, never had the opportunity to achieve its full-service potential because the clinic immediately started to chip away at the type of services that could be provided and the type of patients that could be seen there. So when you discontinue hospital services and departments, as well as limit the number or type of patient seen in the emergency room, it does not take a genius to know that you are going to start losing money. All a part of the clinic's master plan, and as our elected leaders, you fell for it, and we trade the people that trusted you to do what was best for the Lakewood and its people. Now, should you continue to be enamored by the world-class clinic and ignore the needs of the community, the agreement with the clinic must be altered to protect the financial base and services of Lakewood. This letter of intent needs major modifications in order to strengthen the city's position. The clinic wants to sell, the city to sell a portion of the original site so it can build and control everything. Remember that the Lakewood Hospital site belongs to the people of Lakewood and should remain so. Never sell city land to anyone unless in our ability to function as a city. This proposal is too iffy. There are no rock-solid guarantees for the city. We get to keep four acres on which some future developer will build something, as long as it's not another competitor of the clinic. We all know when a developer wants to build something, they want tax abatements. There's no money for the city for a long time. The proposal that the clinic will work with Avon to get some money to us is another area of concern and probably will be difficult to work out. The possible funding source to Lakewood at best could be insignificant and not fill the $1.5 million expected shortfall. Instead, the city should lease the land to the clinic, and thereby we maintain control of it and receive some funding to replace the funds that are being lost, so that the clinic can run off to Avon. Also, with the new clinic facility, the city shall receive all of the facility fees now charged by the clinic to its patients through a so-called "facility fee." The clinic says it will build a new facility because all of the people suddenly don't need a hospital for their medical problems. What kind of a building? Clinic buildings are always glassy, white, and shiny. Lakewood is a brick-and-mortar community. Other new buildings along Detroit, such as Walgreens and CVS, were mandated to produce architectural plans that blended in with the surrounding community. Even the new, more modern housing has a brick-and-mortar feel to them. Let's not completely set our souls to the demands of the clinic. We hold the cards, not them, but they are making you believe it's the other way around. Again, don't forget that the buildings and the land belong to Lakewood, not the clinic. The demands of the clinic to force out any and all competitors from Lakewood should not only be considered a monopolistic plan, but it also, more importantly, denies patients the right to health care of their choice. We may have the right to go to any doctor and hospital, such as Metro, University Hospital, St. John, St. Vincent Charity, and so on, and not be forced into a clinic system because it's the only health care available in our community and area.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan.
Would you give me about one more minute to finish?
Yes.
Denying the presence of another health care system on city-owned land, thus denying patients the right to choose, is both immoral and a violation of patient, basic patient rights. There are a number of questions about this proposal that you should consider, and I will list some of them, not in order of importance. What happens to the existing beds? What happened in 2005 until now that caused the hospital to lose money? How many and what programs and services went elsewhere in the clinic system? How many admissions did Fairview gain at the cost of Lakewood? What happens to the paramedic program that is second busiest in the county? How big will the proposed ER be in comparison to what we have now? Will the ER ever have the holding rooms for patients when there are no possible admissions? Why does the clinic want the Clinic Road surgical building? If it's sold, what happens to them after the money runs out? Is Lakewood the only area in the county, or in the world for that matter, that doesn't need a hospital because all our ailments can be handled on an outpatient basis? The argument that the mayor, council president, and others, including our very secretive Lakewood Hospital Association and Foundation Board members, that only Lakewood needs this type of cure, is at best specious and illogical, and the people of Lakewood are too smart to buy it. How this, did the situation go on for so long without the association, the Foundation members, the mayor, council, and so on, and why did they not tell us sooner? This failure means that they have placed this entire city in jeopardy, and I call for the entire membership of the boards to resign immediately. Thank you.
Mr. Monahan, thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Monahan. Could you, may I have a copy of that so that I can have all those questions?
Yeah, I have to redo it.
You can email it to me, but I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks to Mrs. Monahan, too. The next person who has signed up to speak is Ruth Higgins. Did I get that right? It was a little hard to... Thank you.
I think Mr. Monahan said it all.
And, thank you, and ma'am, just your name and your address, just for the record, that's all.
Ruth Higgins, 1543 Wyandotte Lakewood. And I, too, am very concerned about losing the hospital and all the services, and it does not make any sense that we don't need this kind of health care that everybody else does and our tax bases. Really important to us. Years down the road, they're going to say, "We don't have enough money. We're going to have to lay off our policemen and our firemen," because they're always the first to go. And I just think it's atrocious what they've done to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Higgins. Next signed up is Claudia Graham. Mrs. Graham?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. We glad you're back?
No, you won't be glad I'm not. My name is Claudia Graham. I live at 1222 Ramona Avenue with my family. I'm a twenty-five-year member of the community, and the last few days since, unfortunately, when I heard about the hospital that was on a website, that there was going to be a press conference. So in other words, all the press knew before the majority of the 53,000 that live here in Lakewood. That, to me, is unexcusable and unacceptable. And number two, and I mean this with respect, I blame all of you sitting up there because you were either appointed or elected to represent us, and in my opinion, you have done nothing. That day, myself, along with many other friends, tried to reach you people. Your phones were either rang off the walls, the majority of them had said this number is no longer in service. So then we tried to call the city council office. It rang and rang and rang, then the answering machine came on. No one there to take the calls, and then, suddenly, it appeared that it said, "Webpage not found." So you know what? If you have nothing to hide, you would be taking your phone calls, answering your phones, and I'm just, I, like I said, I feel like I want to cry. I feel like I want to kick people. I'm disgusted with you people. And you know what? Right now, I feel like putting my house up for sale. But you know what I think? I think, no. You know, and I feel I have been harassed by the city, and I totally feel that probably tomorrow morning, I will have the house inspector on my porch again for the tenth time. Okay? I believe that this mayor has harassed me. They have harassed my son at school, I believe, and I don't care anymore. I'm standing up, and Mr. Juris, I am running for your seat, because you do not represent me, none of you up there. To me, I am ashamed that you represent Lakewood. And the mayor, how convenient. He suddenly gets out of plane, and you know what? He has to go, and you people need to go, too, because you're a disgrace, taking away 1,100 jobs. I have six people that live in this community that I know that are worried to death tonight. And you know what they were told? Oh, yeah, you'll get preferential treatment, but you know what? You have to reapply, but that is not going to guarantee a job. And you know what? I pay almost four grand a year for a 45-by-110-foot lot? To me, this is taxation without representation. Shame on you, city council. Shame on you, mayor, and shame on you, Mr. Siley, for putting these ridiculous plans into place. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Yes, oh, Councilman Juris?
If I may remind everyone in the public here to make comments, at the beginning of this, we began with the comment that speakers must be courteous in their language and avoid personalities, so I truly appreciate it.
I was fine.
Ma'am, I'm not addressing anyone directly on this one. I'm just reminding everyone of what the rules are of addressing.
I said, "But not one word."
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Those were the only five people who signed up to speak. We, as I said earlier, the meeting at the Beck Center is a public meeting. We hope all of you come. All of these comments and questions will be noted and presented ahead of time. Every single meeting will be open and transparent. That's how Lakewood runs. We will get there. This is a very difficult conversation, but Lakewood will have it, and will have it in an open and public forum. Thank you all for speaking up. Councilman Juris?
If I may as well, additional points to clarify. On the city website, I know there was a request regarding the lease with the hospital. I believe the lease that I've been reviewing currently is probably the one that is being referred to. I know there is quite a bit of information that's posted on the city website. If anyone needs assistance with identifying that or walking through that, please feel free to let us know. I know that I've found quite a bit just on the One Lakewood website already. If there is more information, we identify.
I can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry. They have a different microphone over here today. I've got a big one. The city website is working?
No, nothing.
The city website at onelakewood.com has the lease that was requested by Mrs. Graham. If there's more information that's needed, please let us know.
Thank you. You move back to item seventeen. Item seventeen, communication from Councilmember Marks regarding Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board 2015 Agenda.
Thank you. Dear Councilmembers, I'm at the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Board on Wednesday, November 19, 2014. The board discussed the following items for council consideration for 2015 agenda. Number one, spay-neuter education and events. Number two, landlord tenant training. And number three, education materials and outreach plan. Please refer these items to the board for action.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes as a point of order. We need to go back on the correspondence from the mayor with a letter of intent attached. They're moved to receive and file and refer to committee of the whole.
Second.
On that motion, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item eighteen, communication from Councilmember Anderson regarding Faith Noble to Community Relations Advisory Commission.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Thank you very much. Dear colleagues, I write today to appoint Faith Noble to Lakewood's Community Relations Advisory Commission. Governor Hill Faith is a wonderful Lakewood neighbor who is committed to the goals and aspirations of this vital commission, and I'm sure she will serve all of Lakewood well in this position. As such, as for council's favorable consideration for this nomination, yours in service, yours true. As for that communication, you receive and file.
Second. On the motion, the second, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty, communication from Planning and Development Director Siley regarding McKinley Purchase Agreement.
Director Siley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of council, I direct your attention to my cover letter correspondence. This is the beginning of the process to discuss the sale of McKinley Site. As you know, there's also an ordinance on the dock of this evening related to the zoning of that property for plan development. There are still at least two more public hearings with Planning Commission and ABR related to the design, but this development agreement, purchase agreement, is the functional development agreement. It outlines the conditions of the sale, all clawback provisions and mechanics of the sale going forward. I look forward to getting into the details of the committee of your choosing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siley. We move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
On that motion, is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twenty-one, ordinance 215, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director of planning and development to enter into a purchase agreement with Liberty Development Company to sell the real property located at 1351 West Clifton Boulevard in pursuit into section 15507 of the codified ordinances.
Moved to place of first reading and refer to committee of the whole.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twenty-two, communication from Planning and Development Director Siley regarding McKinley School Site Res zoning and Plan Development.
Director Siley?
Thank you, Madam President. This request is beginning a formal process for developing the zoning and plan development for the McKinley School Site in conjunction with the purchase agreement. Today, we've held a number of public hearings with both the Planning Commission and the Architectural Board Review, also a community meeting that was at Horace Mann's School related to the project. This referral of the zoning to Planning Commission will ask for a formal review and recommendation back to council related to the zoning. And as mentioned in the committee of the whole meeting, this document, whatever council adopts as far as the plan development, will become part of exhibit two, the purchase agreement, and will be memorialized additionally that way. I look forward to discussing this with you in detail in the future.
Thank you. Director Siley, move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. The next person signed up to speak is Mark Schneider.
For those that I haven't met, my name is Mark Schneider, and I live at 14530 Clifton Boulevard, number 103. I want to begin by commending our public servants for the zealous representation they've given the citizenry. I know that often, public service is a thankless job, and I would suspect this is one of the more thankless times that anyone will encounter in this city. By way of background, I served this region as an assistant prosecuting attorney for Cuyahoga County. From there, I went to the Ohio House of Representatives. During my time in the State House, I had the privilege of working closely with a lot of significant issues with lake health. I was able to learn about the individual stresses that a regional hospital and satellite hospitals face in this economy. From there, more recently, I've served as an assistant law director for Parma Heights. I was tasked when University Hospital came to acquire Parma Hospital with working with a team of law directors in order to maximize the city's position and fully evaluate the situation that we were facing with our regional hospital. I bring this up because I want to point out that I'm acutely aware of the need for a balance between an administration's desire and need to move swiftly and decisively versus the public's need for transparency and a fundamental understanding of the situation the city faces. And I say this to you because, in my opinion and in the opinion of many of my neighbors who've talked to me about this, this is a fundamental decision you face. This is one of those decisions that could either cause a citizenry to lose faith in its government, or it would be more strengthened in its faith than its government. And how you proceed is going to determine that. In my opinion, this ought to be a transparent process, one in which there's a seeking of a few different goals, one of which is a fundamental understanding of the situation the hospital and the city faces. To do that, it's going to require more than one public meeting. It's going to require a dialogue of public meetings. In addition to that, I think this is a situation that's going to require a public consensus that whatever decision is made in this circumstance is one that we trust, understand, and prefer. We may not be facing a bunch of outstanding choices in front of us, but it is fundamental that this citizenry is able to appreciate, understand, and participate in this discussion and ultimately, whatever decision this city is required to make. I want to offer you, as I always have in the past, to serve my city. If any of my experience, my energy, or any other aspects of my career can come to benefit my city, I'm here for you. And I urge all of you to seek transparency and to make sure that this citizenry feels a part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Lori Allen.
Yes, good evening, ma'am. My name is Lori Allen. I live at 1222 Ramona Avenue with my family. I'm a twenty-five-year member of the community, and the last few days since, unfortunately, when I heard about the hospital, it was on a website, that there was going to be a press conference. In other words, all the press knew before the majority of the fifty-three thousand that live here in Lakewood. That, to me, is unexcusable and unacceptable. And number two, and I mean this with respect, I blame all of you sitting up there, because you were either appointed or elected to represent us. And in my opinion, you have done nothing. That day, myself, along with many other friends, tried to reach you people. Your phones were either rang off the walls, majority of them had said this number is no longer in service. So then we tried to call the city council office. It rang and rang and rang, then the answering machine came on. No one there to take the calls. And then, suddenly, it appeared that it said, "Webpage not found." So you know what? If you have nothing to hide, you would be taking your phone calls, answering your phones, and I'm just, like I said, I feel like I want to cry. I feel like I want to kick people. I'm disgusted with you people. And you know what? Right now, I feel like putting my house up for sale. But you know what I think? I think, no. You know, and I feel I have been harassed by this city, and I totally feel that probably tomorrow morning, I will have the house inspector on my porch again for the tenth time. Okay? I believe that this mayor has harassed me. They have harassed my son at school, I believe, and I don't care anymore. I'm standing up, and Mr. Juris, I am running for your seat, because you do not represent me, none of you up there. To me, I am ashamed that you represent Lakewood. And the mayor, how convenient. He suddenly gets out of the plane, and you know what? He has to go, and you people need to go, too, because you're a disgrace, taking away eleven hundred jobs. I have six people that live in this community that I know that are worried to death tonight. And you know what they were told? Oh, yeah, you'll get preferential treatment, but you know what? You have to reapply, but that is not going to guarantee a job. And you know what? I pay almost four grand a year for a forty-five-by-one-hundred-and-ten-foot lot. To me, this is taxation without representation. Shame on you, city council. Shame on you, mayor. And shame on you, Mr. Siley, for putting these ridiculous plans into place. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Yes, oh, Councilman Juris?
If I may remind everyone in the public here to make comments, that beginning this, we began with the comment that speakers must be courteous in the language and voice personalities. So I'd certainly appreciate it.
I was fine.
Ma'am, I'm not addressing anyone directly on this one. I'm just reminding everyone of what the rules are of addressing.
I said, "But not once we're..."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those were the only five people who signed up to speak. We, as I said earlier, the meeting at the Beck Center is a public meeting. We hope all of you come. All of these comments and questions will be noted and presented ahead of time. Every single meeting will be open and transparent. That's how Lakewood runs. We will get there. This is a very difficult conversation, but Lakewood will have it and will have it in an open and public forum. Thank you all for speaking up. Councilman Juris?
If I may as well, additional points to clarify. On the city website, I know there was a request regarding the lease with the hospital. I believe the lease that I've been reviewing currently is probably the one that is being referred to. I know there's quite a bit of information that's posted on the city website. If anyone needs assistance with identifying that or walking through that, please feel free to let us know. I know that I've found quite a bit just on the One Lakewood website already. If there is more information, we identify.
I can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry. They have a different microphone over here today. I've got a big one. The city website is working?
No, nothing.
The city website at onelakewood.com has the lease that was requested by Mrs. Graham. If there's more information that's needed, please let us know.
Thank you. Should we move back to item seventeen? Items, item seventeen, communication from Councilmember Marks regarding Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board 2015 Agenda.
Thank you. Dear Councilmembers, I'm at the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Board on Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. We're discussing the following items for council consideration for 2015 Agenda. Number one, spay and neuter education and events. Number two, landlord tenure training. And number three, education materials and outreach plan. Please refer these items to the board for action. Thank you for your consideration. Move to receive and file.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes. As a point of order, we need to go back on the correspondence from the mayor with a letter of intent attached. They're moved to receive and file and refer to committee of the whole.
Second.
On that motion, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item eighteen, communication from Councilmember Anderson regarding Faith Noble to Community Relations Advisory Commission.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you very much. Dear colleagues, I write today to appoint Faith Noble to Lakewood's Community Relations Advisory Commission. Come to help Faith, this wonderful Lakewood neighbor is committed to the goals and aspirations of this vital commission, and I'm sure she will serve all of Lakewood well in this position. As such, as for council's favorable consideration for this nomination, yours in service, yours true. As for that communication, we receive and file.
Second. On the motion, the second, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty, communication from Planning and Development Director Siley regarding McKinley's purchase agreement. Director Siley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of council, I direct your attention to my cover letter correspondence. This is the beginning of the process to discuss the sale of McKinley's site. As you know, there's also an ordinance on the dock this evening related to the zoning of that property for plant development. There are still at least two more public hearings with Planning Commission and ABR related to the design, but this development agreement, purchase agreement, is the functional development agreement. It outlines the conditions of the sale, all clawback provisions and mechanics of the sale going forward. I look forward to getting into the details at a committee of your choosing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siley. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
On that motion, is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Madam President? Councilwoman Marks?
Yes, may I make a correction in my communication regarding Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board? I would like to refer the communication back to the board for action.
Thank you. Yes, we will, I second the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? What's going on here tonight is that the correspondence that Councilwoman Marks put on for the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board, they are charged with acting throughout the year on those three items and reporting back to this council. Because that's how they're set up. They only consider what we ask them to consider. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twenty-one, ordinance two fifteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Planning and Development to enter into a purchase agreement with Liberty Development Company to sell the real property located at thirteen fifty-one West Clifton Boulevard pursuant to section one fifty-five oh seven of the classified ordinances.
Move to place a first reading and refer to committee of the whole.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty-two, communication from Planning and Development Director Siley regarding McKinley's school site rezoning and plant development.
Director Siley?
Thank you, Madam President. This request is beginning the formal process for developing and zoning the plant development for the McKinley School Site in conjunction with the purchase agreement. Today, we've held a number of public hearings with both the Planning Commission and the Architectural Board Review, also a community meeting that was at Horace Mann's School related to the project. This referral of the zoning, two planning commissions will ask for a formal review and recommendation back to council related to the zoning. And as mentioned in the committee of the whole meeting, this document, whatever council adopts as far as the plant development, will become part of an exhibit to the purchase agreement and will be memorialized additionally that way. Look forward to discussing this with you in detail in the future.
Thank you. Director Siley, move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty-three, ordinance three fifteen and ordinance eleven oh five oh two of the zoning code of the classified ordinances by changing and revising the zoning map of the city with respect to certain property as set forth and described as thirteen fifty-one West Clifton Boulevard from seed, commercial public school to plant development.
Move to place a first reading and refer to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty-four, liquor permit application for D five, F, and D six stock types to Emerald Necklace Marina, fifteen hundred scene, Park Drive.
Councilwoman Bellack?
Thanks, Madam Chair. We have received a review by the police department and law department, found no statutory reason to object to this liquor permit application, but I defer to the Ward one councilman in whose ward this establishment is located.
Thank you very much. Report's received. No reason to object. Thank you for the opportunity.
So therefore, we add move to file with no objection.
I second the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item thirty-two five, as an add-on, liquor permit application for D five, D six transfers to one one nine two two Madison Avenue from Shamrock Tavern, same address.
Councilwoman Bellack?
Thanks, Madam Chair. We received a report similarly for this liquor permit application, a review by both the police department and law department, also finding no statutory reason to object. I noted in the police report the happy comment that the owner chose to invest in this establishment because I believe that she found that this neighborhood of Lakewood is developing rapidly, and she felt confident, so therefore also wanted to invest, which is good and is the right direction for Hurgtown. I defer to the Ward four councilperson in whose ward this establishment is located.
No objection. Officer Fridge has spoken to me about it. Aye.
So therefore, I move to file with no objection.
Second. On that motion, and the second, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Are there any announcements from the administration? None? Hearing none? Are there any announcements from council?
Madam President?
Councilwoman Leary?
I wanted to take a brief opportunity to thank the residents who attended tonight's meeting and spoke on the hospital issue. It's one that is obviously incredibly important for our entire city, in particular downtown Lakewood, but also every resident across our borders. So I look forward to learning much more about the proposal that's been put forth in the coming days, weeks, and months. I hope that there will be much more discussion going forward, and I look forward to continuing to hear from all of you as to what your desires and questions are with regard to that proposal. Thank you.
Hearing no further comments, we will move to adjourn.
Second.
On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here.